We'll call Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Louise Jackson and Kristen Kukay are not here today. They are out of town, but everyone else is here and accounted for.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now move on to our presentation this evening. Perfect ACT and SAT scores. Dr. Fares.
Thank you, Dr. Baresford and members of the board. It is my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the entire CHS staff to recognize a very special group of students. We are here to recognize our students who have earned a perfect score on the SAT and/or ACT. That "and" is important. We are proud of their accomplishments and know that they are more to us than just a number. Sometimes when we start thinking about academics, we get caught up in numbers and performance. And we know that these are greyhounds who make daily contributions to our school, not just in the classroom. We know they are well rested today. We know they have been home. They are excited to be here, and we are excited to have them here with us so that we can recognize them. At this time, our Director of Counseling, Mrs. Rachel Cole, she is going to come up and she will present the individuals so that we can recognize them.
We're going to start with perfect ACT scores. Two-day Archeria. You want to have a fair. Lauren J. Chin-Yao Lu. Allison Ma. Logan O'Connell. Amogu Paluru. I know it's Amoga, wasn't it? Yes, I'm sorry. Mindy Sim. Samya Samasi. Jingyu Xiao. Grace Yang. We have three students we're going to recognize for perfect SAT scores. Grace Zhang. Getika Chirari. Mia Sosa. And then we have two students who made a perfect score on both the ACT and the SAT. Christian Heraosku. And Archit Khaurah. All right. Congratulations again to these scholars. And I also want to take a moment for you scholars to congratulate your parents. It wouldn't be without their support and dedication that you would be here tonight. So congratulations to all of you. We will now take a short pause as it is a school night. If you guys would like to head off because we know that you study. So we wish you the best in this upcoming semester. For the rest of you, thank you for being here. We will now move on to public comment. We do not have any public comment this evening, so we will move into consent. Consent items include personnel report, claims, which is accounts payable. So that's kind of a good definition for you guys. Payroll, approval of gift applications with which this evening, the Carmel Lions Club is donating one copy of each of the following 2023 Young Hoosier Book Award winning titles to every CCS elementary school. And we also have the Social Committee of the Carmel Clay Schools Educational Services Center who made a $50 donation to the Carmel High School Rising Stars Club in memory of Mary Owland. We also have minutes from the executive session of February 8th, the work stop session for February 13th, and the minutes from the regular session February 27th. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
Motion to consent?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. We will now move on to our first action item of the evening. 5.1 change orders of the Carmel High School Nowatorium addition and existing nowatorium renovations. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is an add change order for that project in the amount of $32,078, and it has to do with replacement of five exterior lights.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve 5.1 change order?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All those in.
I might just, we had some conversation behind you. Just, I don't know if you want to share with the public what you told me about, you know, how it wasn't included, but there was a pretty good reason for that.
Yes, this wasn't an oversight as far as the overall project. At the time, we were developing specifications for the project. It wasn't clear what the city was going to be doing with the renovations of Main Street. And since then, they've, we put in, they put in a roundabout at Main and also a part of it at Lexington. And so, so we chose not to include this until we had a better picture of that.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving a change order 5.1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. We will now move on to 5.2 change orders. The recommended, the Board of Trustees approve the below-listed change orders for the Carmel High School Performing Arts addition and renovations. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is also an add change order in the amount of $19,205. However, this entire change order is backcharged to a contractor that was not performing, and so it was assigned to a different contractor.
Questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving 5.2 change orders for the Performing Arts Center, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. 5.3, the adoption of policy 8120 Background Checks for Volunteers and Visitors. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to the Board for recommendation to adopt policy 8120. The current name of this policy is Background Checks for Volunteers and Visitors, and we're proposing that we change the name of the policy so we more accurately reflect what is in the policy. So changing it to Visitors and Volunteers. And the changes to this were, some changes were shared from our attorneys as well as cleaning up some of the areas so that we can better reflect what the policy was doing. So we brought it back in March, and now we bring it back here for your approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve policy for volunteers and visitors? Motion to approve?
Could I ask a question?
If we get a second, then we can go to questions. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. I'll say a motion by Mr. Brown in a second by Ms. Williams. Questions?
Question, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Still learning the process here. The, do you envision there would be any procedural or process changes due just from the revisions to this existing policy?
So, help me understand what you mean by procedural process changes?
Like, if someone was to visit one of the schools, request a visit and go through a background check and do all these things, that was, as I understood, it pretty much in place before, before this policy was revised?
So, so this policy still requires any of our volunteers or visitors to have background checks? That is still part of the policy. They're still required to have those background checks.
Okay.
So that part would not change?
I was just wondering if there's anything that you see would actually change? If this is approved, do the people at the desks that receive people coming in at the schools, would they be doing anything different than they do today?
No, no, those processes would not change.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I have a second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the policy 8120 Background Checks for Volunteers and Visitors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. We will now move on to our first discussion item for tonight. The materials adoption, part one. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to you part one of our materials adoption. And before I share with you the spreadsheet that's already in your board packet, I wanted to just go over our continuous improvement model just so everybody can have background on where we go because we don't just pick any materials. We have a, what we have is a six-year cycle for all of our programs that we look at. And we start with a program evaluation. So the program evaluation is made up. We have a committee of teachers, of administrators, of community members, of parents. And we look at the research on best practices. We also look at, we examine our current instructional practices. We examine our current data that we have, both our practice data as well as our student achievement data. And we formulate recommendations of going forward. So we take, what are the best practices? And what does the research say? And how do we make our programs even better? And so from there, we formulate recommendations from our program evaluation. And so from that step, the next step is we go into our curriculum development, and we look at the standards. We look at our state standards, and the state standards also change every six years as well. They get updated. And so that's why we're on this six-year cycle so that we can stay current. So we look at those state standards. We analyze that. We analyze the national standards. Like, for example, we have our math, Indiana math standards. But NCTM, which is the National Organization, also has standards. We look at the best practices there. So we analyze those pieces. And we look at, we start developing our curriculum. And then the committee moves into materials adoption. And so we look at what, before we even look at any materials out there, we first develop a rubric to look at based on our best, our recommendations from our program evaluation to say, what are the types of materials we need that will support our curriculum, will support the standards, that will best support our programming here in Carmel Clay Schools? So we first develop that rubric before we look at the materials. And then we look at, what are those available materials out there? And it is a very rigorous cycle where we work with the people on the committee to determine what they might recommend. And then we send it out to all of our teachers that would be using those materials. They have an opportunity to share input. We also, this year, we implemented, we started this, and it worked really well, where we had an evening where we had all of the materials, the proposed materials out, and we invited families to come in, parents to come in to be able to look at those materials. They got to thumb through them, look at them. And we had, especially for the first time of doing this, we had a good turnout for that. And they got to share feedback as well on those materials and have any questions that they might have answered. And so that's with the materials adoption. Then once the board approves it, and this evening, I'm bringing it to you for discussion. And then at our next meeting, I'll bring a recommendation for the board to approve it. Once the board approves that, then we look at that alignment with those materials. We take the curriculum that we started developing and align the materials with them. So for example, like, for, we start developing our curriculum based on our standards, and then we pull the materials in to look at where do the materials cover what standards and what's that scope and sequence need to look like to best instruct our students? And then we work on that program implementation. And then the ongoing professional development is a cornerstone throughout the entire process as it continues. How do we make sure that we are implementing these, that our teachers have the support that they need with that professional development throughout the whole process? So that's our process in a nutshell. And so this evening, I have materials from our big adoption, which is math this year, for both elementary, middle, and high school. And then there are some other miscellaneous pieces on the materials adoption. This evening, we have some books for a couple of our English courses at the high school that we are replacing these. These are consumable books that we would replace. And the teachers worked with these materials and said, there's some other areas that could be better. And so that's what we have for our materials adoption. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Not a question, but more of a comment. I know last year, we, was the first time that I have been on the board, and we watched the presentation, I believe it was for world language. And this is a very comprehensive process with buy-in from the community. As you mentioned, the administration, the teachers, parents, community members. And I thought, I remember some students are part of that. Is that true?
Yes. At the high school, we will pull students in to that piece for the program evaluation. Typically, we do not include middle school or elementary school students, but we do include them in focus groups. So when we're doing the program evaluation, we, some of the data that we collect, we look at, you know, implementation data from teachers, what's those instructional practices? But then we also do focus groups, and those are elementary through high school where we have the opportunity to ask our students what's working, what's not, what are the things that you like, what do you wish you would have? And so those are, that's part of the program evaluation as well.
Thank you. So I don't know what other school districts do, but I was very impressed by the collaborative nature of this. And I think things like this are what make groups like niche.com rank us in the top 1% in the country. So thank you very much for your work.
Nice plug. I like that. Real quick, just to piggyback off of that. So we just, and you touched on it a little bit, but I would love for you to expand because I loved it, the math open house. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes. So we advertised for an evening, and people could come between 5:00 and 7:00 one evening, where they, we had it in here, and we had all of the materials around the room where they, anybody could thumb through the materials. And then we had several people from the committee. And Dr. Peterson, who heads up the math, she leads our math curriculum, were here to be able to answer questions to our families that had any questions from that. So it was an open time that they could come in and look through the materials. And then we had a feedback form that we asked anybody that came to share that feedback with us on the materials and their thoughts on it.
I love that. And is that something that you look forward to doing more in the future?
Yes, yes. Because many times, you know, we include our parents on our program evaluation. We include them on the materials adoption. And sometimes what happens is it, it's hard when you're in there with a lot of educators, and sometimes they fall off. They come for the first couple of ones, and then we don't see them again. And so this, we felt like we could get a lot more input from a lot more families to do it this way. And so, and it was very successful. So we were excited by that.
No. I was, I love seeing Emily. Kudos to you. Did a great job of advertising that. I saw that in quite a few places. So that was great. Okay. Greg, do you have any questions? Sorry.
Yeah, just one, you've answered the one I was going to ask that. Thank you. Once the curricula are adopted, are the teachers required to use that? Or can they bring another curriculum to augment it? How does that work?
So our, so the materials that we adopt, this is the main materials that teachers are required to use. Now, there is also supplemental materials that teachers may bring in from time to time, but this is the major areas that the teachers are required to use. And then the supplemental pieces, they look at, for example, a supplemental piece might be a current event article that they may be reading based on something they're studying. And so that would, that's not necessarily part of the materials adoption. It just really depends on the subject area and the courses. And so, but when they do that supplemental, those are also, also need to be vetted on why it is that they need something in addition to the materials. And sometimes when we find that there's a lot of things that might be supplemental, that we might find that that's a hole in our program. And so we need to look to, is there something we do need to adopt? And we have a really great, thanks to Emily, a great piece on our website that talks about, here's the adopted materials, here are the supplemental materials and what that looks like, and then also any materials that are in our media center and how you can gain access to that. And so we have that under our academic page. And so that, for the public, that might be some, another place too to look on our website to look at those different types of material that we have.
So you mentioned there's a vetting process for the supplementals materials as well then?
Yes.
Who is on that?
Well, we have a whole, the teacher does that, and they work with their principal on that. And there's a whole policy on when you do bring in supplemental materials, of how do they align with the standards? Why is it that this is something over and above that you need for that piece? And so they look at, in looking at the appropriateness for the age level of the students, all of those pieces, and that's vetted at the school level.
So that's done before they're actually used in the classroom? Okay, great. Thank you.
Back to math. That's what we're addressing. What is, oh, how many people came to the open house about?
I want to say we had 30, was it 30? Or it was right around 30, 35.
Anything else, Jenny? Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Dudley. We look forward to you bringing this back to us.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our report section of the evening. Dr. Oh.
Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Baresford, and members of the board. For this evening's Staff and Student Services Report, I'm very excited to welcome Carmel High School Junior Nancy Zhang, who serves on the Indiana Department of Health Youth Board. Nancy will share some information with us around the Youth Risk Survey sponsored by the CDC. I'd also like to thank Kate Shidell, who is here with us this evening from the Indiana Department of Health, as well as Stephanie Whiteside, CCS's Mental Health Coordinator, for being here tonight to support Nancy. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Nancy Zhang, who will present tonight's Staff and Student Services Report.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nancy Zhang. Like you said, I am a junior at Carmel High School currently. And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone so much for giving me the opportunity to be able to speak here on such a pressing issue. And so today, I'm going to be presenting some statistics from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, specifically the mental health section. And so a bit of background about me is that I'm from the Youth Advisory Board. And so this board was formed last year in 2021, and it brings together a group of amazing high school and college students from many different counties around Indiana. And we focus on topics like mental health, reproductive health, minority health, access to care and resources, and other things as well. And so a bit about the survey and the data I'm presenting today. It's actually called the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, sponsored by CDC. And the Indiana Department of Health administers it every other year. And they randomly select a group of high schools to take this survey. And so this survey gives direct data from the students about these various categories here. Today, like I said, I'll just be focusing on mental health. Some more background. So if you see a blue-colored slide, it's going to be from the School Health Profile Survey. So this is related, but it's specifically for principals and teachers and looks at some initiatives they're taking and asks them about some of these topics that we have here. So just looking at the demographics for the 2021 data, we can see that we have a very representative sample. Over 1,000 students took this survey. And as you can see here, we have a lot of representation from all different ages, races, grades, and genders. An additional demographic, sexual orientation. We can see that around 3/4 of students were heterosexual. 4.5% identified as gay or lesbian, 10.7 bisexual, 2.8% as any other sexual identity, 4.4% as questioning, and then 1.6 as not sure. So diving straight into the statistics now. So we can see that with the school health profiles, with the teacher survey, the percentage of schools in which the lead health education teacher received professional development on emotional and mental health two years before the survey has been on an upward trend. So this is really great to see. Actually, from 2016 to 2020, we can see pretty much a doubling of the percentage of teachers who received this development, which is really great. Now with the teacher survey, this is a question that asked teachers if they tried to increase student knowledge on suicide prevention and awareness and things like that during the current school year. And again, this is on an increasing trend as well, which is amazing to see that teachers are really trying to push for this. Now, the percentage of stu, sorry, schools with a school improvement plan that includes health-related objectives on things like social and emotional climate as well as counseling, psychological, and social services has also been on the increase. So overall, we're seeing really great rates with this sort of education component. However, looking at some statistics, that this is clearly an area where we do need a lot more work. We found that 30.7% of students said that their mental health was most of the time or even always bad. And so additionally, the percentage of students who felt sad or hopeless, so much so that they stopped doing usual activities, was at a whopping 46.9%. The percentage of students who seriously considered attempting suicide was at 27.7%. And the percentage of students who made a plan of how they would attempt suicide was at 22.2%. Lastly, the percentage of students who actually attempted suicide but were fortunate enough to be there to report that data was 11.8% of students. And so when I first saw these statistics, I was absolutely devastated as these rates are pretty much higher than I'm pretty sure anyone would expect. And so just thinking about how many students I pass a day during a passing period in Carmel High School, I'm sure many of you are familiar with how big the school is and how many students are walking around during that time. Knowing that a probably very similar proportion of students at Carmel are also undergoing these struggles that we're not able to see externally is really heartbreaking to sort of consider and think about how we can increase resources and help these students. So looking at some of these demographics with. So looking at some of these demographics with percentage of students that said that their mental health was most of the time or always not good, we can see a general trend which is higher for females as well as multiracial youth and also LGBTQ plus youth. Yes, so looking at, oh, sorry. Okay, so looking at the percentage of students who felt sad or hopeless, we can see again a alarmingly high rate in females with 60.4% and also just an overall increasing trend over the years. The percentage of students who seriously considered attempting suicide has also been on the rise, unfortunately. Again, higher rate in females. And then the percentage of students who said that they made a plan about how they would attempt suicide. And so again, we can see this overall upward trend, which is absolutely the opposite of what we want to see, especially with such high rates here. And those who actually attempted suicide. Again, mostly an upward trend for the female group and also both genders combined. But luckily, we have seen a slight decrease in the proportion of males who have actually attempted suicide within the past year of taking the survey. So some more demographics about those who felt sad or hopeless. We can see another general trend of females having the higher proportions as well as a really staggeringly high rate of 80.1% of gay, lesbian, or bisexual students who took this survey who reported this. The percentage of students who seriously considered attempting suicide, again, we see this general rate of higher in females, multiracial youth, as well as those who are LGBTQ plus in those communities. And then the percentage of students who actually attempted suicide, oh, I think I slipped, skipped a slide, sorry. The percentage of students who made a plan about how they would attempt suicide, again, we see these trends. Now, with the percentage of students who actually attempted suicide, again, sadly, we see these general trends with multiracial youth, females, as well as the gay, lesbian, or bisexual and other questioning categories. So what can we do about this really pressing issue? And so in general, mental health has been really overlooked. Fortunately, over the past few years and decades, we have grown to recognize the importance of mental well-being. So we have had, like I said before in the, on the first few slides, we've had a lot of resources been added in education. But clearly, there still is some stigma around mental health, getting resources and things like that that we really need to emphasize further. Additionally, a specific problem that we may have at Carmel is with high-performing students. And so I've been in the school district since kindergarten. And I've had the amazing chance to grow up around such amazing peers and students that have inspired me. But being in such a competitive environment, firsthand, I've seen a lot of students internally struggle with stress, anxiety, depression. All of these rates that we've seen are pretty correlated with things that I've seen at Carmel and just my experience growing up here. And so actually, when I walk into a classroom and I first talk to some of my peers, some of the first things that we say to each other are things like, I'm so tired. I have a test next period. I only got like four hours of sleep last night. I'm just exhausted. And so a lot of students are having this on the inside but may not be showing this because of how amazing we are as a school district and how many awesome students and how much potential we have here. Additionally, looking at the trends that I covered before, looking at the groups that were females or minorities in general, like the students who are multiracial, the importance of equity and inclusion in making sure that those students also feel like they belong here, those students are also able to get the same resources. Additional things like that are really important in what Carmel should consider for future steps. Also, increasing student voice. So a lot of students, there's clearly a disconnect between the amount of resources we have and the students who are still struggling. And so Carmel has so many amazing resources. We have so much. And still to have so many students who are super overwhelmed and probably facing some of these struggles here, we really need to make sure that we are able to push for more awareness of how many resources that we actually have for students and also pushing for more resources in general because there's never too many we can have. So additionally, participating in these surveys is not mandatory, but the IDOH needs your help. And so this is some of the only data they get from the youth. And so I really urge Carmel to participate in this if we have the chance to because our school is so wide and diverse that we would be able to contribute a lot to the survey and benefit future steps in the world of mental health and improving access to care for these students. I'd like to say thank you again to everyone who helped me come up with this presentation and for allowing me to present here today. If you have any further questions, I'd love to answer them now. And my advisor from the Indiana Department of Health is actually here today as well, Kate Shidell. Her, she's one of the amazing people who runs the Youth Advisory Board. And if you have any questions about the details of how the data was collected or specifics like that, I'm sure that she would be happy to speak on that if you have concern about that.
Well, first of all, Nancy, thank you so much. It takes a lot of bravery to come up there and to speak. And not only are you up there speaking, but you are the one that reached out to ask us to speak in the first place. So kudos to you. Thank you so much for your service tonight and to sharing this information. Kate, thank you for being here. I do know we probably have a couple of questions. So between you and Ms. Whiteside and Dr. O, if we can kind of, you guys can like tag team of how we're going to do those. Again, Nancy, fantastic job. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I will go ahead and get started with a question. So those numbers this year, so Carmel High School did not participate in the survey results this year, but that's not saying, of course, that those are, isn't it across the state, correct? Those results?
Yes, in 2021, the white slides.
Perfect. And then my second question is, so this is obviously, we're assuming that COVID-19 played a big part in this also, based upon all the factors that went into that, correct?
Yes, it's likely that COVID did have an influence on how students were feeling at that moment and how, how like COVID played into different factors of feelings of stress or depression, things like that. But we actually have seen an overall upward trend as well. So an impact from COVID, but also the trend has shown that we are just increasing in these rates anyway as well, unfortunately.
Yes, thank you. All right, now I will not be selfish and I'll open up to other questions on the board. Questions on the board?
More of a comment. Just thank you. You're so poised. And as Katie mentioned, that I know that's very difficult to do. Not everybody feels comfortable in public speaking. And you did reach out to us and we just applaud you for the good work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to have the opportunity to be here because it's just so crucial that I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm able to share this data from a youth perspective because it's really impactful, I think, when youth voices are sometimes hidden indirectly by just other factors. And it's just really important to be able to hear from the youth. And so thank you so much for letting me do this.
Thank you. Greg, questions?
Yeah, I would just comment too that really appreciate you bringing this to us and the community. And it's, I appreciate your passion and I just encourage you to stay with it, you know? It's so alarming that we have this crisis in the first place and it's this pervasive, but it's even more alarming to me, the trajectory we're on. I mean, some of the charts you showed go back to 2008 and, you know, way, way before COVID where things were bad, but maybe not as bad. So it doesn't sound like we're leveling off. And it points to me that we really need to be understanding the cause. And we see the effect, but I'm not sure we understand the cause across. It's a nationwide issue. It's not just our state, our schools. It's everywhere. And I think we really need to have a different focus or an additional focus, not just on treatment, but you know, what's the cause of these problems? I mean, I look in Carmel and it's, you know, it's an affluent community. You know, everyone's got food and safety and good buses. I mean, things are well here, but, and I know we weren't in the numbers, but you know, from your comments. And I just know that it just seems like our, our kids are really struggling with, with the stress and the anxiety. It's almost like they weren't prepared for stress and anxiety. And I don't know, I'm not a mental health specialist. I, I've done some reading on some other states and I know that there's, some are looking, changing the focus to be more on resiliency in the students. You know, because it's, life comes at you hard. And I think the people that are better, best prepared for that are going to be able to not be so hurt and damaged in different ways. So I, I would just encourage that we really look for that, you know? What, what is causing this? And if we're at, I mean, particularly looking at the female numbers and the LGBT numbers, it's, it's way worse than some of the others. Now, you show the one, for example, those that had attempted suicide, you know, being 12% in the state. It's, that's more than one out of 10 kids have attempted. And when you look at the numbers, if I, if I made my note right, it's like 16% are females. That was up from 11% in 2015. And the males have actually come down, as you pointed out, and that's good. But there's something going on. And I think we, we need to get to the bottom of it. And I just challenge our administration that, you know, as we, you know, proceed on this, that we really take us, you know, keep doing all the good things with, with treatment and helping the kids. But I think we really need to take a, a very serious focused look at, you know, what's causing this and teach our kids to deal with it. Because it's, we haven't crescendoed, you know? It's still going up, so. But thank you so much. This is just a wonderful thing that you volunteered to the community. And you just did a wonderful job with this, as we all said. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, go for it, Dr. B.
I just wanted to say thank you. And I want you to know we're very proud of you that you're serving at the state level on behalf of Carmel and really Central Indiana. And so I want to just tell you we're proud of you and I really appreciate you going that extra, on top of everything else that you're doing. You took that on as well. And also, we know that mental health challenges hit everybody in every situation. And I have a question for you is, because you walk the halls, none of us do. And so do you feel like the stigma around mental health has gone down or is the same or going up? Do you feel like kids are more able to talk about mental health issues and how they're feeling? And those, do you think the stigma is lessening any? Or do you think it's still a powerful thing?
Yes, so I think the stigma has definitely, fortunately, gone down in a few years, the last few years. But it definitely is still present because I know that a lot of students I know or even like specifically minority groups are really struggling to take the first step in getting access to care because of some stigma that they personally experience in greater quantities compared to possibly other students in different scenarios. And so looking at every student, every student is so different, so diverse. They have so many different environments that our students are in. And so yes, the stigma has definitely decreased, but it still is at, I would say, different rates from different students. And so definitely making sure that we have resources that encompass every sort of area and making sure that we tackle mental health from all different perspectives with resilience or anything else as well could really benefit this issue.
Thank you very much. And we're going to take your challenge and keep going at the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again, Nancy. I always feel much better about the future state of the world when I have students like you who present to us. So thank you so much.
And Nancy's our first student to bring in a report to the board.
She is.
As far as I know, at least in the last five years. So you're number one.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our monthly financial update with Mr. McMichael.
Well, I'm intimidated to give this after following Nancy, but I'll do my best. So we're only two months into the year, so you can't really draw too much from this information. But nevertheless, you can see here that our education referendum rainy day funds in the February, you'll see in a minute that we're, our cash balance is running ahead. That's primarily, we do think we're a little ahead of last year, which we anticipated we would be. But the most significant difference is, is that January was a three-pay month last year, last year, and it's not this year. And so that amounts to about another $5 million for that month. And so that's, that's the greatest, causing the greatest difference between the two years. And you see here in 2022, a little asterisk up there by January, that's what that's sharing with you is that it's a, January was a three-pay month. Then in our operations fund, again, fairly comparable. This fund's not as comparable as the other because it, it does have salaries and benefits in it, but it has a lot of other things that are not necess, the expenditures aren't as predictable as we go through the year. But you can see here that we're, we're a little ahead of last year. As far, we are in the negative, which is typical because the operations fund being funded primarily from property tax. And so we're, we're spending every month, but we, we get the majority of our revenue and when people pay their property tax in May and November. And, and so that's, that explains why it tends to run in the red and then it'll come back out as we, we get into May and June. Rainy Day Fund is pretty much an inactive fund most of the time. We did use this fund reflecting COVID when we gave a COVID stipend. But other than that, there's just minimal expenditures out of this fund. And sometime this year, we'll recommend another transfer into this fund from, from our operations fund, which is a part of our financial planning to, over time, to increase our overall cash balance between those three funds. And I think, and then here's, here's 2022. And you can see there's very little activity there as well, but we have a larger cash balance in '23 as compared to '22. So with that, I'll respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Any questions from the board? Thank you. We will now move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I really hate starting out a report this way, but once again, we've had a school shooting in our country. And today, we lost three students, elementary students and three adults to another act of violence. And I just want to encourage folks to keep your thoughts and prayers with the folks in Nashville. It's a little Christian school and, and who had procedures and, and safety layers in place. But it's just going to be an ongoing, an ongoing fight, an ongoing battle, ongoing preparation. And, and in the world of school, school safety never sleeps. And we've got two resource officers in the back there. We're, there are two that serve in two of our schools and we have at least one in every, in every building who focus on that safety. But every time this happens, it throws a chill through all the educators and parents alike and, and students. And so we, it's a sad day again. And I've had to make this, this, this comment too many times, so. But I wanted to, to put that out there. I wanted to, first off, I thought Nancy-
I wanted to, first off, I thought Nancy was great and she highlighted a real, a real trend that's been going on for quite a while. And, and it only intensified, as you could tell by the numbers in that survey over COVID. And so like, like, like just said, we've got a lot of things in place here in Carmel Clay Schools. That's, that's good, but we're going to have to keep pushing and, and keep working and find solutions and, and support for the kids who need it. With that, I'll, I'll try to pivot to some good stuff that's going on around the district and I'm going to keep it short today, but, but I did want to throw a shout out to the Creekside Middle School Tech Cats. Now, I've talked to you a lot about the Tech Hounds at Carmel High School, but the Tech Cats are our middle school robotics team and they are 46032. That kind of sounds like a zip code, doesn't it? And B, and they are headed to the world competition. They, they were in one of the highest, they're, they're going to the worlds, which is the one of the highest level robotics competitions in the nation for middle school students. So congratulations to the Wildcats and well done. And to keep the Wildcat celebration going on, they also won the Academic Bowl. They are the Hamilton County champions. And, you know, I know I talk a lot about state champions, but winning the Academic Bowl in Hamilton County is hard, and so they had to do a really good job to win that. As a former principal in, in Hamilton County, the competition is fierce. So I can, good congratulations to them. Along the same line for Carmel High School are Cyber Patriots, and they are a club that competes in cybersecurity. And so they go through a lot of different scenarios and they set up challenges for these students to, to identify the bad guys online and, and different kinds of attacks that, that happens in Cyberland. And they placed sixth in the nation. And so they did really well at state level and now they're, they're placed in the top six in the nation. And they won the Boeing Challenge. So within the competitions, there's like an overall winner and then they have special challenges that each, that the teams do. And the Cyber Patriots from Carmel won the Boeing Challenge with a perfect score. And, and so well done to the, the Cyber Patriots for their work. And to keep the Carmel High School celebration going on, we also had the state chess, our, our chess team took home first place. They are state champs, so congratulations to them. Now, for the bell ringer, I thought I would make it instead of something that happened, I want to kind of wish our Tech Hounds well, because that second, that second week in the spring break, April 8th and 9th, they're going to be competing in the state competition with the big robot. And I thought to show you a little bit about what that's like, we'd show you a little video so you can see our bot and see what kind of activities our kids do. This is amazing corporation that gets built every year with hundreds of students from Carmel High School. So here they are, the Tech Hounds, 2023.
Okay, enabling.
Hello, my name is Piper Ellin and I am the student team lead for the FRC Robotics Team here at Carmel High School, the Tech Hounds. Right now, we're in the middle of build season, which is a really exciting time for the Tech Hounds, because we are currently working on creating a robot in six weeks that will compete at competitions this March and in April. Every year, FRC gives us a game for the robots to play. This year's game is a pick and place game, which means we will pick up pieces from the field or from the human player stations where humans can drop pieces onto the field and the robots have to go place them in what's called a grid. Robot Ops is the division that creates the physical robot. They work on things like the drivetrain and the subsystems to pick up the cones and the cubes. And then we also have the, the programming electrical division, which creates the electrical board to make sure all the wiring is right so it can drive. The programming team creates the code to also make the robot go and so that it can run by itself during the fif, the first fifteen seconds of the game.
So if a robot was like right here and had a camera facing all three targets, we could basically say, okay, our robot is at point five point three, four point two in 3D space.
Hi, I'm from the PR division and PR is so important for this team, because with a team with over sixty-five sponsors, it's really important that we stay connected with them. So we make weekly newsletters, we make the merch, and we do so much for this team.
Then we also have our construction team, which creates the physical field. So for example, when the robot needs to pick up the cones and the cubes, it needs to put them on the grid. The construction team is the team that will build the grid that, that these pieces will go on. During preseason, we meet once a week for about an hour and a half and we train the students on tools, we teach them the basics of coding, we teach them how to use Photoshop. Depending on what division they're in, they'll learn different skills. Before competition season and wrapping off our build season is the robot review, which showed off everything we've done during the season, which includes the field, the robot, all the merch, and just everything that we've been working really hard for in these last six weeks. We have two regional competitions that we will compete in. After those two regional competitions, we see where we're at and hopefully we'll get to go to state. After competing at the state level, eight or 10 teams from Indiana get sent to the national level, the world's level, which will be held in Houston in April.
Just crazy, isn't it? And just amazing. So we, we're wishing them good luck. They don't need luck, they just need to get out there and get the job done. And, and so many kids involved with that. It's a really fantastic program. So in closing, I want to thank and congratulate all of our students, staff and families on the completion of what I call the long stretch from winter vacation, winter break to spring break. It is the long haul of the school year and, and they've made it. And when we return from spring break, we will have thirty-four school days left of an awesome school year. This year has been crazy good. And so I wish the entire CCS family that you can achieve the three Rs over spring break, which is rest, relax, and recharge. And so whether you're traveling or you're on a stay vacation, a staycation, we want everybody to have a great break, be safe out there, and I can't wait to get back and, and do the sprint to the finish line. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And again, a huge thank you to our students for all the incredible things that they are doing. We have spring break from March 31st till April 7th. Our next workshop session is April 11th, followed by, followed by our regular session on April 24th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
And just a reminder that the meeting is on Tuesday after break, not Monday after break. Thank you.